Thank you. We'll call this regular city council meeting of June 6th to order. Please call the roll.
Flora?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Kifer?
Here.
Bergeron?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Kuz?
Here.
Zing? Here.
Thank you. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This brings us down to communications. I have a couple of resolutions that I'm going to do during communications. The first one, and it's a great honor to do this, is Resolution Number 192738. A resolution of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska honoring Deborah Cowan for years of service to the City of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Public Utilities and establish an effective date. Whereas Deborah Cowan began her employment at the City of Ketchikan in a temporary position as a Ketchikan Public Utilities Temporary Telephone Operator on August 27, 1976, and was subsequently offered permanent employment as a Finance Service Representative/Receptionist on June 7, 1979. Whereas Deborah Cowan was rapidly promoted that same year to Finance Department Key Punch Operator on October 16, 1979, and was then quickly promoted again a year later to the position of Finance Customer Service Representative II on October 27, 1980. And whereas Deborah Cowan was superior in her performance, that she was promoted to a more senior position as Customer Service Representative III on March 1, 1983. And whereas Deborah Cowan was due for and was selected to fill the very important position of Ketchikan Public Utility Credit Coordinator on February 6, 1986, a position which she has held for more than 30 years. And whereas Deborah Cowan has been dedicated, committed employee of the City of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Public Utilities, contributing immensely to the profitability and success of the organization, but at the same time presenting a friendly, warm, and consistently cheerful face to the customers of KPU. And whereas Deborah Cowan actively and tirelessly worked more than 120 hours per week multiple times while assisting in a month-long conversation, converting and upgrading different accounting and billing systems changing KPU and the city, while at the same time meeting all credit and billing deadlines without complaint during disruption. And whereas Deborah Cowan is always available to selfishly assist and train new employees in KPU customer service with consistent kindness and good humor. And whereas Deborah is invaluable as a go-to expert for all KPU staff, including KPU management, with her amazing and accurate recall of the entire KPU sector of the municipal code, as well as office procedures, KPU and city rules and regulations, accounting and balancing procedures, as well as borough and city building regulations. And institutional knowledge is not only awe-inspiring, but invaluable to all. And whereas Deborah Cowan concerned about the less fortunate citizens of the community, compiled a list of grant service organizations so that people could find assistance for past-due bills, who had so adeptly managed a payment arrangement system that people in need feel friendliness and respect from her in her department rather than shame and Whereas Deborah Cowan accepted the responsibility of auditing and balancing federal KPU accounts and negotiated terms and conditions for the accounts in addition to her other many job responsibilities. Whereas Deborah Cowan, in the occasional absence of the manager, cheerfully assumed responsibilities for decision-making and task completion such as timesheet balance report generation and memos. And whereas Deborah Cowan undisputedly is the most respected member of the entire Ketchikan Public Utility staff, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska as follows. Section 1. The Council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska, recognize and commend Deborah Cowan for her dedicated services and significant contribution during her 40 years of service to Ketchikan Public Utilities, the City of Ketchikan, and the community. Section 2. The Council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska, thanks Deborah Cowan for her past service and looks forward to her future contributions. Section 3. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon pass and approve by a duly constituted quorum of the City Council of the City of Ketchikan on this 6th day of June, 2019.
We love you, Debbie. Love you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I just have a few things I'd like to say, please. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, I would like to express my humbled appreciation for this recognition, and thank you all for giving me this opportunity to express this and for everything that you've given me over the last 40 years. However, I feel the necessity to express to all of you my sincere appreciation and gratitude from both myself and my family for allowing me to be a part of the City of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Public Utilities team for my entire working career. I have always felt it has been a true gift for us. People are surprised when they find out that I have only had one employer for my entire life. My question to them is, why not? I am so blessed and could not have asked for a more loyal and awesome employer and coworkers. It is because of all you, who I regularly refer to as my city and KPU family, that I owe this to. If I had to do it all over again, I would not change a thing. Working for telephone and electric utilities seems to run in my family bloodline. My grandmother was a telephone operator in the 1930s and 40s. My grandfather was an electrical engineer. And my father worked his entire career in the telecommunications field, the last being the PBX foreman for KPU and retiring in 1998. Thank you. And I just wanted to go over a few changes that I've experienced in the last 40 years. And there's been a few. We didn't have computers when I started. I'm kind of aging myself here. But we didn't get those until the early 1980s. And at the time, nobody wanted to have anything to do with them. And now we can't live without them. And KPU customer service and the credit department was under the city finance department until around the 1988 or 1989, when we moved from City Hall out to 2930 Tongass Avenue, when we were adopted by KPU Telephone. We had five-party lines and rotary telephones when I started. And when you mention that to the younger generation, they can't even imagine what that's like. We were able to smoke at our desks in the 70s and 80s. And Carl's office on the fourth floor is where the telephone division lived. The telephone operators, Ed Cushing, lived up there. The central office, the plant department, et cetera, until they were all relocated to the Alaskcom building in the early 80s. Bob Newell's office was the police department. Telephone and electric work orders were all manually typed on three-part carbon paper. And we sure went through a lot of white-out. AT&amp;T was our only long-distance provider when I first started. And we had to go through the marine operators to call the boats before cell phones came available. The chief operator manually typed the names and phone numbers on slats daily to keep our spindle updated, as well as line assignment, keeping individual index cards for all of their information and cable pair information, and maintain them with pencils and erasers on a daily basis. Telephone and electric bills were all on one billing statement. It wasn't until 1988 when they were separated due to regulations. Eventually, even to this day, we went into a new telephone billing system, which was DPI. Even to this day, occasionally, we have customers thinking they are still all on one statement. We had a bank of pay stations in the lobby of City Hall, which could get very interesting in the summertime, when the cruise ship personnel and tourists would come in and use them all at the same time. And Kim's office used to be Stanford's drugstore hallmark in the mall there. And I've gone through three billing conversions. Once in 88, 2000, we went from DPI to CommSoft for telephone. And in 2014, the electric gave up the AS400 and transferred into New World. And that's all I have. I'm sure there's been many more, but I couldn't think of them at the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So I have another proclamation, a joint proclamation of the Ketchikan Gateway Borough and the City of Ketchikan. Whereas on May 13, 2019, two Flight Scene Tour folk trains with a total of 16 people on board were involved in a tragic mid-air collision, which resulted in the death of six individuals from the United States, Canada, Australia, Ketchikan, and the rescue of 10 additional individuals. And whereas the local Good Samaritan shot chronic and calling acted quickly to rescue the passengers in the water after the float plane collision and brought multiple victims safely to shore and alerted the United States Coast Guard to the incident. And whereas Ketchikan Volunteer Rescue Squad, United States Coast Guard, United States Border Service, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, the Alaska State Troopers participated in the search and rescue efforts, was resulted in those involved in the collision being recovered. And whereas Allen Marine Tours interrupted a scheduled tour to transport patients from the accident scene to dock at Jordan Inlet Lodge. Whereas George Inlet Lodge staff acted quickly and flexibly in handling the needs of the first responders and providing additional vessels to aid in search and rescue efforts. Whereas Ketchikan Fire Department, North Tongass Volunteer Fire Department, South Tongass Volunteer Fire Department provided emergency medical service to those involved in the float plane collision, while simultaneously maintaining assets and capability to respond to other calls for services in the community. Whereas Ketchikan Police Department Dispatch maintained communication with the incident command and medics and coordinated the movement of patients to the hospital and airport. And whereas Tempsco Guardian Flight and Ketchikan International Airport coordinated and provided emergency medical evacuation transportation for the injured. And whereas Peace Health Medical Center administered advanced medical treatments and transport stabilization for those injured in the incident. And whereas Princess Cruise Line and Cruise Line Agencies of Alaska provided support for the traveling companions of the guests involved in the incident. And whereas many agencies, businesses, individuals throughout the community provided care and support during and after the incident for those involved and their families. Now therefore, we jointly do hereby proclaim our sincere appreciation as we honor and recognize the countless individuals and agencies who responded to the May 13, 219 incident. Signed on behalf of the Ketchikan Gateway Borough and the City of Ketchikan, Mayor Dave Landis and Mayor Bob Seaver. Could I have Chief Hope come forward?
Present you with this, and thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm very honored to receive this recognition on behalf of our responders and community members, who really came together during this tragic accident. On a good day, our community gets along well. We're a great community. But you really get to see what your community is made of during a disaster. And everybody came together, they responded well, they worked together well, and the support was just amazing. So I'm really proud to be here, proud to be part of this community, and proud of our responders. So thank you.
Thank you. Also, under Communications, I have Lot 9A12, which is the appointment of our fire marshal. That board, we have Lot 7A11, request a substitute motion for business item 7A11 in our calendar. That brings us down to persons to be heard. I'm going to go get quick. So first up tonight, we have Agnes Moran.
Well, it must be another criff night, because I'm here. On your calendar, you have the agreement with DCEED. And I just want to express my gratitude to Mark Hilson and Bob Garcia for all the work they did in putting that together. I know it turned out to be a little more tedious than we had all anticipated. I had my staff up at the facility yesterday morning, walking around with their little floor plans, and they are really excited to get going on this. So we're really looking forward to moving forward and working with the architect and continuing to work with Mark and Bob on this, and we do appreciate your support. And so if you have any questions, I can address them.
Are there any questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary.
Mr. Amelon. Thank you much. Good evening. My name is Mary Stevenson. A year ago, I attended the city council meeting to discuss the recent restriction of tour operators using Mountain Point Parking Lot for a wildlife viewing area. Since that council meeting, I received two letters written by the city and the borough in July of 2018, clarifying that neither owned 3D1 parking lot, that the mental health land trust did. I'm giving a series of questions to Mr. Amelon for him to answer at another time, but it does need clarification that an amendment was written for that dock vendor program that needed a lot of questions about. And it was after I left that meeting, I was hit by a truck at an intersection of Main and Grant Street. Within six to eight months of the scene, there was another near-miss incident and another pedestrian vehicle collision. Because of the sensitive information of all parties concerned, I'm providing everyone here tonight a copy to refresh your memory. In conclusion, I ask the following to Mr. Amelon and the staff. Me and my legal counsel has asked the question several times, and your office has failed to respond with an answer. What is the official police department procedure for law enforcement officers to follow at the scene of a pedestrian vehicle collision? When the victim is sent to ER, do you release the driver? Do you cite him? Or do you arrest him? If there are none, do you intend to establish guidelines? Yes or no? If it is no, then on what grounds are you setting the precedent? There are still safety measures to be taken to make Main and Grant Street intersection safer. When is Mark Hilson going to complete the projects? The speed limit sign was approved by Chief White, however, not installed. The pedestrian crosswalk sign was just a matter of deciding where best to place it, and it has yet to be installed. As for removing one or two parking spaces adjacent to the police station, the city remains liable to personal injuries as long as they knowingly continue to approve space that creates a blind spot for the driver and pedestrians. How much is the Bergeron settlement costing the city? Wouldn't it have been safer and cheaper to remove those spaces after my accident a year ago? What will it take to get Chief White and his officers to enforce the new signage and center line regulations? Why pay wages if regulations are not being enforced? I look forward to working with the city and making this intersection safer, if not for me, for you and your family. Thank you.
Next up, Robert Venables.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Robert Venables. I'm the executive director for Southeast Conference, and I know I'm standing between you and a very long agenda, so I'll be very brief. But I did plan my trip to Prince of Wales Island with in mind to have the bookends coming and going to at least be here. One of my priorities at Southeast Conference is to stay connected to our membered communities and be available. I will be available tomorrow. I'll be in town all day, as well as at the chamber function, where we'll continue to talk about ferry issues. I did meet with both the manager and separately with the mayor on Monday to go over some in more detail. But just a highlight on a couple of different things, but always begin with a word of thanks for the support that Ketchikan has shown to Southeast Conference, in particular, and to the AMHS Reform Project. That has provided a very solid base of work from which we've been able to, I think, have some good, sound discussion and pushback on what might have been a shutdown in October. Now, we're more worried about the bad news and press around a possible shutdown July 1, because we're looking at, you know, loss of revenue if people from the outside take that more seriously than it perhaps is. But before us now, we know that the budget number is not going to exceed the number that the conference committee has given to, you know, the governor, or will be soon transmitting to the governor, where he takes it from there. We hope not any further. But our attention now is focused more on how that money is going to be spent in the decision-making process on that issue and other issues of importance going forward, including the recommendations that come out from the consultants. And that'll be some of the issues that we talk about tomorrow at noon. Also, separately, not tomorrow, that'll be all we talk about tomorrow is ferry issues. But one of the things that I did have a good discussion with the mayor, and also Mayor Landis at the borough, is, you know, our relationship with Prince Rupert and how we can continue to strengthen that. And so that's a top priority for Southeast Conference, as I know it is for Ketchikan as well. And so we'll look forward to working with the mayor and you all on that. But with that, I'll just say I'm available tomorrow. If any of you want to talk to me individually, or I'll be at that chamber function at noon. If there's any questions now, fine, otherwise, thank you.
Anybody have any questions, Rob?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
That is all that were signed up tonight. So that'll move us on into the consent agenda. And I have some items that I would like to add. I would like to add 6A2, which is the Order declaring 319 Main Street surplus property. I would like to add 7A1, 7A3, 7A10, 11, and 12, and B3.
Sounds good.
Hearing no objection. Madam Kirk, would you please read the item? Oh, we need a motion, yes.
Move to consent.
Move to second. Would you please read the item?
Approval of the minutes, special city council meeting of May 9, 2019, and regular city council meeting of May 16, 2019. Memorandum of Agreement between the City of Ketchikan and the Ketchikan Indian Community, KIC, for the Indian Reservations Road, IRR program. A budget transfer, repair, and restoration of the salmon table. Community development block grant, CDGB agreement between the City of Ketchikan and the Department of Commerce, Community and Economic Development, Division of Community and Regional Affairs, Ketchikan/Wish Domestic Violence Shelter Design and Engineering. Budget transfers for Bar Harbor South float 8 injury replacement and Thomas Basin float 1 rehabilitation. A budget transfer for the acquisition of Police Department Salbright Unit. Liquor license transfer of ownership and location to Cape Fox Lodge LLC DBA, Cape Fox Lodge from Slagel LLC DBA, Alaska Fish House. And a liquor license transfer of location, Cape Fox Lodge LLC DBA, Cape Fox Lodge. Declaring a 1991 Attachi XE200 trackhoe as surplus and authorizing its sale to the Ketchikan Gateway Borough. Exempting the procurement of annual colocation services for the telecommunications services from competitive bidding and written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, greenhouse data. Ordinance 191894 declaring that 319 Main Street, Ketchikan, Alaska Old Fire Station Number 1 is surplus property, second reading. Resolution Number 192738 honoring Deborah Cowan for her years of service to the City of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Public Utilities. Exempting the procurement of a snow plow truck from competitive bidding and written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, RWC Group. Award of Contract Number 1910, GSI Data Conversion, Tarmigan Software, Inc. Budget transfers for Award of Contract Number 1913, 2019, Pavement Overlay Surface Repair, CCON, Inc. A budget transfer for Change Order Number 1 final to Contract Number 1806, Grant Street Trussell Extension, BAM LLC. And authorizing additional operation of rental diesel generations with associated expenditures up to $200,000 in preparation of a requisite budget amendment.
Thank you. And I'd like to make sure and note that 7A11 was the correct with lot that would be approved under consent. Is that correct?
That is correct. Substitute motion, I'll make sure.
Yes. Okay.
Any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Does 6A1, does that need to be voted down?
Correct.
Does this vote it down by voting consent?
No, no, we didn't add it.
Or you didn't add one?
No.
No, we're going to move it down.
Okay.
Any other question? Please call the roll.
Zing?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Thank you very much. It passes and moves us on to unfinished business. We have Item 6A1. It's Ordinance Number 1886, declaring that 319 Main Street Old Fire Station is surplus property, second reading. There was an error, and this motion needs to be defeated in order to move forward with Order Number 191894. Correct?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Move the City Council approved the second reading Order 181886, declaring that 319 Main Street Old Fire Station is surplus city property, authorizing disposition of the property, filing a referendum petition, establish an effective date.
Second.
Then move in second. Lou, you have anything?
Pledge allegiance.
Okay.
Please call the roll.
Bergeron?
No.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes, no.
Zing?
No.
Flora?
No.
Williams?
No.
Kifer?
No.
That motion is defeated. We had Item 6A2 on consent, bring this down to 6A3. Ordinance Number 191896, adding the new section 5.20.016 to the Ketchikan Municipal Code, entitled "On-Site Marijuana Consumption Prohibited," second reading. Out of motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Move the City Council approved the second reading Order 191896, adding a section 52016 to the Ketchikan Municipal Code, titled "On-Site Marijuana Consumption Prohibited," conditions upon voter approval, and establish effective date.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Lou, anything?
Nope. I'm going to vote for it.
Anybody else?
We have item 6A1. It's ordinance number 1886, declaring that 319 Main Street Old Fire Station is surplus property, second reading. There was an error, and this motion needs to be defeated in order to move forward with order number 191894. Correct?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Move the city council approval in second reading order, 181886, declaring that 319 Main Street Old Fire Station is surplus city property, authorizing disposition of the property, providing filing a referendum petition, establishing effective date.
Second.
Then move in second. Lou, you have anything?
Totally against.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Bergeron?
No.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes, no.
Zingy?
No.
Flora?
No.
Williams?
No.
Kuyfer?
No.
That motion is defeated. We had item 6A2 on consent, brings us down to 6A3, ordinance number 191896, adding the new section 5.20.016 to the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled "On-Site Marijuana Consumption Prohibited," second reading. No motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Move the city council approval in second reading order, it's 191896, adding a section 52016 to the Ketchikan Municipal Code titled "On-Site Marijuana Consumption Prohibited", conditions upon voter approval, and establish effective date.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Lou, anything?
Nope, I'm waiting to vote for it.
Anybody else? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Kuyfer?
Yes.
Bergeron?
No.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
No.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
That motion passes. Moves us on to item B1, ordinance number 191895, amend Ketchikan Municipal Code Section 11.04.130, entitled "Inspection Concerning Access to Utility Customer Premises," second reading. Do I have a motion, please?
Your Honor, I move the city council approval in second reading, ordinance number 18-1895, amend Ketchikan Municipal Code Section 11.04.130, entitled "Inspections Concerning Access to Utility Customers' Premises," renaming that section "Access to Premises," and establishing effective date.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Dave, you have anything?
Kind of speaks for itself.
Anybody else? Seeing, hearing none, please call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Kuyfer?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
That means the new item, new item 7, General Government, A1 was on consent, brings us to A2, designating a date for the first city council meeting of July 2019, and that it will fall on the Fourth of July holiday. The two dates I think that would propose is July 8, which is a Monday, or our July 9, which is a Tuesday. Is there a preference?
I'm available either one.
Maybe we should come in fourth.
No preference. What are the dates again, Buck? The 8 or the 9? Monday or Tuesday?
Either one's Monday.
I'd rather do Monday if there's choice, but...
Yeah, Monday's fine.
If there's four hands for Monday?
Yeah, if you only get one hand, there's...
I'm voting for the...
We'll move that meeting to Monday, July 8. Thank you very much. Item 7A3 was on consent, brings us to item 7A4, resolution number 192737, proposing that adding a new section to the Ketchikan Municipal Code to be numbered 5.20.016, entitled "On-Site Marijuana Consumption Prohibited." Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the city council approval, resolution 192737, proposing adding a new section to Ketchikan Municipal Code to be numbered 52016, entitled "On-Site Marijuana Consumption Prohibited", directing the Seafler D.C. Act. Such action is necessary to place a question before the qualified voters of Ketchikan, October 1, 2019, and establish effective date.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Lou?
Nope, I have nothing.
Anybody else?
Let's get inside.
Seeing, hearing none, please call the roll.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
No.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Kuyfer?
Yes.
Has the consent down to item 7A5. Discussion of placing crossing guards at the intersection of Water Street and Shonbar Road. Councilmember Gage. Jan Lee?
Yeah, I'm here. Uh, hold on. Okay. So, I, the city council, authorize the city manager to tax for $10,000 from appropriated reserves of the CPB excess tax special revenue fund to the street divisions, Water Street, and Shonbar Road intersection, crosswalk improvement project, capital account fund third party, preparation of required ADOT and PF permit done. Huh?
Should we have a discussion?
Second?
I second it.
You made a motion, and it was seconded. I don't have the motion in front of me, so I don't know...
It's under 7A.
I'm just reading what's on there.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Yeah.
So, Jan Lee, you have first shot at it. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, basically, I think it speaks for itself to keep people clear on that intersection. Um, I don't know if this might be one of those places where we often would get, eventually, put in additional pedestrian crosswalks, like we did with attack shooters down by the hospital and talk-through stoops. I think it would be a good idea either way. It might be even worth looking at doing a four-way because of the congestion in that area from people trying to get in and out of all angles. Just my two cents, but for now, I think crossing guards is a good idea.
Sure.
Gage? Go ahead.
Okay. I certainly don't object to the action, but I have a problem with the item being called discussion and then an action item being tacked onto it. If someone's just looking at the agenda, they're going to see discussion, so I'm not going to... Yeah, I think that's a bad precedent if we're going to have action items buried, then we need to set discussion items, so...
Appreciate that.
Your Honor?
Yes.
First of all, I certainly appreciate Jan Lee bringing this issue up. I live downtown, I work downtown, I'm here all the time, and I'm through the traffic everywhere. It bothered me now that on February 14, I was struck in a crosswalk by a police vehicle. So I'm particularly sensitive to pedestrian safety after that. And I can tell you that that experience for me personally has caused me to have, just when I see dangerous conditions, you know, as far as on the pedestrian things, it brings fear and anxiety to me personally. This particular intersection that Jan Lee is speaking of, I was on Tongas, on Water Street, headed toward Madison. That's where, you know, I lived in Madison Harbor, so there were two tour buses that were in the turning lane that were kind of like obscuring the crosswalk, and there were other cars zipping by them and people in the crosswalk poking out from behind the tour buses, I mean, just right into traffic and cars going right by. So this condition not only happens here, but it happens in multiple locations, and it varies due to the road construction. I mean, this agenda item and the next one should be addressed by us doing something, by getting some folks out there while this construction is ongoing, and we have, that's a permanent situation of what Jan Lee is talking about, is that we need to do something about this. I mean, we've had, Ketchikan itself, as far as our tourism, we've had two deadly plane crashes. The last thing that we need is a motor vehicle pedestrian accident during the construction. We should be particularly sensitive to this issue and to public safety. So whatever we do tonight, if we just give staff general direction to get some bodies out there to make it safer, let's do that. I mean, I can't sit here as an agenda item and tell you that, like, my particular agenda item is about Stedman Mill and Dock Street, because I was coming up by the old library, and there were just an unbelievable amount of tourists that were streaming right by Dave's wife's store, and in that intersection, taking pictures of the totem, not looking. And today, when I was at Cars, I was almost hit again by a pedestrian, by a guy driving that was looking at his phone. So one of the things I'm going to bring up at the end of tonight's meeting as a future agenda item is a distracted driver's ordinance. I mean, we need to do something about, you know, we have, we're going, hey, let's have millions of people come to Ketchikan, well, let's keep them safe, too. Let's do that. That's all I got.
Thank you, Dan.
Carl? In regards, we got, we got two items here, and Sam has one, and I guess they both should be considered, and I don't know how the city's interaction with the state is in regards to how we proceed with these types of projects.
Your Honor?
Just a minute.
This is Jan Lee.
Just a minute, Carl.
I thought, I thought this was a, just a, actually, a discussion. However, being that I'm in a place where there's a lot of tourists, and what I had noticed here on Kona is that they have implemented four-way stops, and really, the driving speeds in those very congested areas do, and I don't know if that could be something we look at for with the state, too. I know that might make people upset, but there's the bypass option, so...
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Carl right now.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, for the Shonbar-Tongus intersection, the report that was prepared by the Public Works Director was trying to convey that that intersection, if you want to place crossing guards there, is going to be particularly challenging, and whatever we do to reconfigure it, you're going to have to get it permitted by DOT, just like we did for the two intersections further north that we put in the pedestrian activated lights. And the first step in doing that, given the department's current workload, would be flushing out some type of design, bringing it back to council for conceptual approval, and then getting drawings put together for submittal to DOT. If, Mark, can you... Based on my understanding, if we don't reconfigure the intersection, as was alluded to in Mr. Hilson's report, it's going to be difficult to put crossing guards there as the intersection is now?
Carl has it correct, yes.
Can you elaborate on...
Sure. Basically, if you don't put two crossing guards out, and you only do one crossing guard, you will be stopping traffic in the intersection, which then snarls the side street. It snarls the bypass, basically, and access in and out of the berth. So they really do go hand in hand. You do have a conceptual sketch in your packet that shows a proposed crosswalk on the north side, along with some curb improvements and ADA ramps. We feel that that layout emulates other layouts in that corridor, also emulates some of the distances that were required, so you don't want to have excessively long crosswalks because it takes too long to walk across them. So that shortens the distance of the crossing, still maintains many, minimum radius for turning movements. So we feel that, you know, if we went ahead with the design according to that sketch, it would have the best chance of being approved, but ultimately, DOT would have to buy into this by issuing a permit. We could very well apply for a permit, and we could have any number of responses, from no to, of course, yes, to we will study it more, and we'll evaluate and monitor. And so that was DOT's approach to the Heckman Street intersection up by vigor when we approached them about that. And they finally came back and said, we need more data, we're going to do counts, we're going to monitor, we're going to look at it. So there's your range of options. But if you want to get an application in, we have clear, you know, a clear, concise concept plan that we could, as Carl said, fully flesh out into a permit application, bring it back to council, have you act on it and submit it, and then bird dog that with DOT.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
I think it's probably a good idea to have crossing guards there, especially for a good portion of the day when a ship's in, but I don't, I can't get any logic in moving it to the other side, because the people coming off the ship are going to the south side of that intersection. They're not going to be forced to the north side of that intersection unless you want to put more people up in there in the dock and direct them down there. They're going to come out and go around that way right there on the, on the, on the south side. Most of them go down the, the walkway anyway, but the ones that cross are crossing there. They're not crossing on the north side.
I would defer to Steve, if, I don't know if you have something you want to add to that, Steve?
Yes. Important Harvest Director Steve Corpron, a couple of comments. If we put crossing guards at the current single crosswalk, it's going to take two, and I still don't think it's a very safe situation for the crossing guards or for the pedestrians. There are 12 lanes of traffic at that intersection. Each leg has three lanes. The intersection itself is over 100 feet across. We do two crossing guards at Main and Mill right now with the two crosswalks. Right now, there is no crosswalk on the west side of that intersection there, across from the 49er. The, even if we put two crossing guards at the current crosswalk, when they stop traffic there, people are going to want to cross on that other side, and, or the vehicles are going to keep coming towards the stop signs that the crossing guards are holding. If you put a crossing guard on each side of that intersection, you'd be putting a crossing guard where there is no crosswalk currently. So if you're going to do it, you need to have the other crosswalk installed first. I would not put the blinky signs in there. The city tried that here at the tunnel crosswalk about eight years ago, I think it was, nine years ago. The people that are from out of town that are used to seeing crosswalks with push buttons want, are waiting for a walk signal. So what always happened here at the tunnel, they would push the button, the light would blink, cars would stop, the people would not cross. There would be words exchanged, and then usually the driver would peel out, and it was not a good situation. So we had to put black garbage bags taped over the switches every day when the ships were in, and then we'd untape them for the evening. That's what would happen if you put things like this at berth four where there's a lot of tourists. It wouldn't be a good situation. I live south of town, I have yet to see those signs activated by Tatsudas. If I sat there all day, I'm sure somebody would push them, but very, people very, very rarely push the buttons when they cross the street by Tatsudas. So I'm not really in favor of the flashing yellow things. The other thing, Councilmember Gage mentioned a four-way stop. In graduate school, I, way back when, I thought I was going to maybe work for DOT someday, so I took a lot of traffic courses and a lot of pavement courses and that. I don't see the state ever approving a four-way stop for an intersection with 12 lanes of traffic on a state highway. I just, I just don't see them doing that, and it would be very difficult to get the traffic to, through that when you have three lanes of traffic on every leg of that thing with left turn lanes on everything and that, you know. That's, four-way stops work really well when you have one lane, you know, one lane in each direction on all four legs. In a perfect world, that, that intersection gets a traffic light. That's what it needs. When we had the funding to do it, the state came down and did a traffic study and said it doesn't warrant it, they wouldn't, they wouldn't approve it. Maybe they come down and do it again, but, you know, if we propose a four-way stop, they're going to come down and do a traffic count and a study, and I just, I don't, I just can't see them approving a four-way stop for that. Well...
So Steve, in regards to Councilmember Cluse's question, if we were to put that crosswalk on the west side of the intersection, would there be a way that we could delineate and direct the passengers down that west side of the Shonbar Road into berth four?
If, if we had a crossing, if we had another crosswalk there, and people do cross there now to go over to the coffee stand, we feared that when the coffee stand went in last year. It's not a lot of people, but it's definitely more than it used to be before the coffee stand went in. People very, very rarely cut across there. Now they do, it's not a tremendous amount. Most people go down the promenade. And I've really monitored that intersection in the last two weeks, ever since the comments were made at the last meeting, and there's not, there's, there's very few peak... very few peak moments where there's an issue. Where we have the crossing guards now is where we have locations where, if we don't have the crossing guards, traffic gridlocks, because you have these gobs of people, and just as four cross, and you're about ready to go, then five more cross, then two more cross. And that's why we have the two we have now. We're getting close to that at the tunnel. We've been manning that for the last several weeks now. And on the blissful Fridays and joyful Mondays, I think we're pretty much to the point, we're probably gonna have to continue to do that on the big berth three days now. Right now, we're taking that out of hide, out of the anti-crossing guards three positions that we have down in the corner. We haven't needed the anti-crossing guards as much this spring because of the fencing. I'd love to have the fencing back every year right now, but that's helped. But we've been short-staffed, and it's because we haven't needed the anti-crossing guards as much. That's where we've been pulling the tunnel person out. And that's where we always cover our sick days. We cover our breaks. We cover our rotations, our restroom breaks and things like that. We had two people quit right as the season started. In the last week, we've had three people quit with no notice. It's already a tight job market. We've been advertising again. We currently have three in HR for approval right now. I think two came back today. I hope we get the next one back tomorrow. And that's just to get us back up to only being a couple people short. If we're directed to, you know, throw two more people down there, you're gonna... We're gonna have to probably hire three or four people to cover that position for the week. It's not gonna happen overnight. You know, it's a really tight market out there. CCON flaggers make almost twice what ours make. And ours are taking more abuse this year than normal because of CCON's project. We're staffing them till three, when CCON takes over, and our crossing guards are taking abuse because of the construction project, but they're only being paid about half of what the CCON ones are. So, morale's a little tough on the front line right now, but we're working through it.
I appreciate that. So, taking into consideration Councilmember Kiper's comments, we do have a motion on the floor. And in regards to it, it is to provide funding so we can get a permit to ADOT in regards to improving and putting a crosswalk on the west side. Is that what I...
Just one question, Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
How do we spend $75,000 to construct a crosswalk? I don't understand.
Let's ask Mr. Hilson.
Yeah, that's a good question. So, it's not just the crosswalk. What gets you is the demolition of the existing concrete, the existing curb. There's a storm catch basin that's gonna have to get relocated. Then, we're gonna have to construct new curb, new sidewalk, and new ADA ramps. So, the actual crosswalk is the simplest part. It's all of the stuff that leads up to it that adds cost.
Did you get all that, Mark?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
You're welcome. Lou, and then...
Why don't we just start with one at the crosswalk that's already there and see how it works? I mean, this has been brought up a couple of years in a row, at least, to me, and brought up to Carl. So, I think we should at least do the test down there and see how it works.
We can do that, Mr. Mayor, but I think at a minimum, it's gonna take two, is what my staff is telling me to...
I understand that. If we can't get it, we can't get it. But we got the authorization. If we can get the people to get down there, we can do it. If he wants the job, then we won't get it.
Yeah. I guess I probably watch this as much as Steve does down there, working dock four about three times a week. But, yeah, it's a hazard, but it works. And if people wake up and do what they're supposed to, and that's not saying they're going to, the buses and the cars and all the tourists, they turn and go. And most of the tourists go the other way. They're not really crossing there. So, if we could put a couple of crossing guards down there or somebody, maybe try it. But I don't know whether it's gonna be significant. The other thing I would say, as much as anything, this may be a DOT issue, isn't that a 25 mile an hour zone until you get further down toward the tunnel and maybe slow them down after they cut the corner up there by Talbot's? I mean, that might save us as much as anything because they clip that corner, and then they're off and running. Or they come out of the tunnel, and they're off and running. And I don't know. That's, to me, is a better slow-down just a little bit, or slow us down.
Port Harbors Director Steve Corpron, currently, it goes to 25 at the tunnel. And it's 25 from there all the way till down by the airport parking. It goes to 35. So, it's 20 up till the tunnel, and it's 25 from the tunnel currently.
That's two blocks right in there. If it was 20 miles an hour, it might be as good a solution as anything.
Ma'am?
I don't think that putting a crosswalk in on the west end is the solution to the problem. We have a problem right now where pedestrians are poking themselves out in front of traffic, and they're gonna get hit. We need to get some bodies down there with some crossing guards to protect them, not only there, anywhere else that needs it. We have, this year among all years, we have all this construction, we have some real dangerous spots. The one down by David's wife's store is a perfect example. I mean, goodness. I mean, these guys get off the boat, they don't think that, you know, they just don't think. They're walking out into the street, out into traffic, "Hey, there's a big totem pole. Let's take a picture of it. Let's back into the street." That's the one that I see all the time. I go through there all the time. They are literally backing onto the street, off the sidewalk, without looking. So, I think that after the construction season's over, I think it'll be a lot better. But I think the ultimate solution for this intersection is a street light, not a crosswalk that's gonna take a pedestrian further from where they want to go. They're not gonna use it. They're gonna do what I always do when I go, "I'm gonna take the shortest route." I'm not saying that, you know, not everybody uses their best judgment out there. And it's just the way of the world. So, we need to get some people out there to make sure that... to help them be more safe. That's all I have. I want the crossing guards. I don't want to do anything else.
Okay, so, thank you. So, what we have before us right now is a motion with a second to provide $10,000 to provide a permit to DOT. And if we want to fail that, we'll vote that down, and then we can direct, I think, if we want to put a couple of glasses in there. Yes?
I still got... I'm with Dave. I don't think this is a legal motion. This was not a motion. It was a discussion item. So, we might give four hands, but it's not a motion that's legal.
What do you think, sir?
Well, it probably should have been done as 7A under the agenda. We could have Gage's motion.
Generally, there is concern that, as we suggested, this was a discussion item, and we made a motion in regards to that. So, at this time, would you withdraw your motion, and I'll have a second withdrawn, if that's okay?
Yeah, okay. I withdraw the motion. Okay.
Thank you. Lou, you withdrew your second. All right. So, the motion has been withdrawn. There's been a suggestion that we do a trial down there with some crossing guards. Is that what... We have four hands in the council. All right, thank you.
I'm ready.
That brings us on to Item 7A6, discussion of placing crossing guards at the intersection of Mission Street, Main Street, and at the intersection of Stedman Street, Mill Street, and Dock Street. Councilmember Bergeron?
Thank you. I think we've already beat this one to death. I think that, you know, staff shorthanded. My personal preference is for crossing guards is at the intersection that we just talked about. You know, I think that we should just admonish staff that we have an exceptional year with all the construction. There's a lot of danger. There's more people than ever this year. I mean, I'm looking out my window from my house. I've seen new cruise ships I've never seen, you know. So, we've gotta do a better job with public safety. And I just pray God that nobody gets hurt this year. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Is there anything else in regards to Item 7A6? Seeing none, we'll go to 7A7. This is a discussion of an act, either a temporary moratorium or permanent prohibition of commercial rental, of our provisions of dockless vehicles and a downtown port, dockport by itself. I have some information and been watching what's going on. Juno just presently had put a prohibition on him until such time as they can put regulations in to manage it. The city, Seattle, if you've been there, they have the yellow bikes. When they first started that, it got out of control. There wasn't good management. The bikes were being left in areas that were hazardous to pedestrians. They weren't being collected for a number of days. And so, they ceased that program until such time as they were able to get regulations again. And in all the documentations I've seen from other cities that have done this, there are some large companies doing bicycles and powered scooters and stuff, and they really have to have them evaluated to see if they, first of all, match their transportation program, and if they really do function in the core areas where they decide to have them. I was downtown today, and I just couldn't imagine 15 bikes and 15 scooters on the sidewalks from what we had today. I think we'd be looking for an accident there. So, I guess what I would ask, if the council approves, is to have management look at, draft an ordinance, prohibition, with the thought that at some point in the future, we would have a transportation or plan for the downtown core area, and we could better look at that at this time. But I'd hate to... My thought is, if this was to occur, I'd hate to have somebody go out and spend a lot of money and start to try a program, and then to have us tell them no. So, I'd rather get out ahead of them. Yes, Dave?
This question was... Didn't we already ban scooters or segways or something?
We banned segways, but that was specific to that.
So, I'd like to move forward with that and have them come back. Sounds good.
I got a couple of questions. So, a dockless vehicle is like the community bicycles that you can use your credit card and rent. But that wouldn't prohibit like a fat tire bicycle tour? What if somebody opens up a tour that's a bicycle tour that you jump on a bike and follow the leader?
I guess it would really depend on whether they're gonna do that at Sam. In regards to the downtown core area, that's just not a good blend at this time.
Not this year, that's for sure. I have personally taken bicycle tours to downtown Paris. It was awesome. So, you know, but when I look at this, I'm going, "Well, does that mean bicycle tours?"
At this particular point in the city limits, yes. And this would be to the city limits until such time.
If I might, Your Honor. What I'd understood up to this point, and from looking at what the action Juno had taken, and what seems to be the chief problem being experienced elsewhere, is the dockless feature of the vehicles. And the problem becomes that the renters just leave them hither and yon. They end up blocking driveways, being left in front of private businesses, and the like. And so, what I was envisioning was something along the lines of Juno, which would prohibit, or at least put off to a future date rentals, short-term rentals of any of those type of vehicles, motorized or otherwise, for that reason, and wouldn't in and of itself have any regulation on anybody riding a bike or anybody doing a bike tour, as long as it doesn't involve leaving it somewhere for somebody else to have to hassle with.
Thank you. Thanks. So, four hands for that? Okay, thank you. This brings us to Item 7A8, City of Ketchikan KPU Compensation Plan Update, Ralph Anderson Associates.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council Director, City Manager, to schedule a special meeting of the City Council for the purpose of having Ralph Anderson and Associates present the firm's update to the City of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Public Utilities Compensation Plan on such a date as determined appropriate by the City Council.
Second. Lou, second. Judy?
I'm glad we finally got it, and let's move forward.
So, Carl, what would be a suggested date? Have you talked to Ralph Anderson?
They can't do it before the 24... Until after the 24th of June. So...
What would we look at, then?
25th?
I'm available the 25th. I'll be out of town as of 27th.
Yeah, I think any 25th, 26th, 27th, something like that.
Are we talking about June?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
25th, 26th, to 27th.
Any votes is fine for me.
So, I think what would happen is if we pass this, and Carl, you can get hold of them and see which one of those dates were better for them.
We'll get hold of them tomorrow, and then we'll get the word out to council.
All right.
But then you'll be gone.
I will be gone, and I would not suggest delaying it until I return.
All right. Thank you very much. So, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion?
What date did we pick?
We're gonna get to Ralph Anderson, and he'll go back to us if it works for them. We've got three dates, 25th, 26th, and 27th of June. Seeing any other discussion, please call the rule.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora? Flora?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Thank you very much. That's most impatience. We will have that date at some point here in the near future. Brings us to Item 7A9, Resolution Number 192736, levying a general property tax for municipal purposes upon all real and business personal properties in the City of Ketchikan year 2019. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council to approve Resolution Number 19-2736, levying a general property tax for municipal purposes upon all real and business personal property in the city for the year 2019, providing for the collection of taxes due in 2019, prescribing penalties and interest for delinquent taxes, and establishing an effective date.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Judy?
Well, I think we all knew this was coming. We talked about this during our budget, and here it is.
Lou?
I wasn't here at budget time. Sorry. The increase was for to have money available for any changes in the comp plan or whatever. Is that what we're talking about for this extra mill?
It was part of the discussion in regards to that. But the entire budget, as we went through it, at the end, it was... I think this was the...
That was correct. That's what the council adopted.
When we adopted the budget, we knew that this was part of the...
Well, Carl, when you made up the budget, did you calculate a 7.4 mill rate?
Not when the budget was proposed, but following the discussion of the budget, the transmital letter, and the issues that were raised in the transmital letter, which included the compensation plan update, and what we projected as the cost, the council opted to structure the budget on the 8 tenths of a mill increase.
The only thing I look at it, and I don't think we need to raise it right at the moment to cover those kind of costs. I mean, we've, you know, the assessments went up greatly last year, dollar amount, talking to Carl, and I expect that they'll probably go up again. Plus, we have... Our reserves are in great shape. If we had to come up to $4.55 for the compensation plan with just the 20 positions not filled there, I mean, that's probably the money right there. I think we should just hold off, see what we're going to do with the comp plan. We have money to cover. If we did everything the comp plan said just for this part of the year, we have plenty of money to cover. We have, I think, $4.8 million in reserves. And that's just in the general budget, general fund. And then, you know, when they start into the next budget, look at what they want to do for the whole impact of the compensation plan and future negotiations, then maybe I can see going into it. But right now, I think we could buy this year without doing it.
Ma'am?
Yeah, I'd like to just extend Lou's comments just a little bit. I'm not in favor of raising the property taxes either.
I'm not in favor of raising the property taxes either. I think that we need to look at our reserves. And he's right about assessments. I mean, I own a fair amount of real property and my property tax bills go up without the mill rate going up. They go up tremendously. The other thing that we need to keep in mind about the people that we represent is that we've been hammering them with electrical diesel surcharges. And not only that, we have the state, you know, the state fiscal thing is coming up and so we have some impacts. I think that we, as an entity, need to hold the line on taxes and I think we need to live within our own resources to make it right with our employees. I certainly support adequately paying our employees. I think that we have the wherewithal to do that without a tax increase. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would consider deferring it after listening to Councilmember Williams, but not if this conversation at a later date turns into now we can't do anything with the compensation plan because we don't have the money. We've got 46 classifications below the median, 14 of those are 15% or more, 19 open positions. We've also got 15, we've also got 28 people with 15 years or more that are eligible to retire in 2020 or less. So staffing and payroll costs are going to increase over the next couple of years for a whole bunch of reasons. And I'm not sure how far we want to dig into the reserves. But that being said, I also know that we'll get a little extra sales tax money from online sales and at some point in the near future, we need to have a discussion about what the tourists, especially particularly the cruise visitors can be asked to contribute to, well, a whole bunch of things, but payroll included.
Thank you, Mary.
Your Honor, this is Jan. I agree with Mark and maybe one of those other items is the tax cap. You know, I don't really want to raise it, but at the same time, I don't want to come back and say, oh, well, now we don't have the money to do this. Nor do I want to put us in the position of not having money to fall back on when the need is greater. And we have been, this count has been kicked for multiple years and our employees, we need to make, we need to make it right with our employees or we're going to have nobody running anything.
Thank you. Luke?
Now, Mark, I, I'm not talking, I mean, what you said, I agree. We don't want to kick this down the road. I'm just saying we have the money to cover it without raising the property tax this year. That was my only point.
Understood. Got it. Okay, thanks, Luke.
Judy?
I'd like to ask Carl a question. Carl, do we have the money to cover it without the increase?
If you want to move forward with implementing the compensation plan and not increase taxes this year, you can go into reserves. But that's unrealistic if you expect to sustain that. You cannot implement the comp plan update as it's laid out, which is almost a $2 million cost, and not understand that, well, we might implement it for July 1 through December 31st, but you're going to be right back at this position come next June. Because you can't keep dipping into reserves to do it again and again. That's why the council in December structured the budget to raise the mill levy. Now, if you don't want to go the full eight tenths of a mill and you only want to say half that, that's probably doable for this year. And if you proceed to implement the comp plan at some point this summer, but recognize-
That we're going to have to raise it.
You're going to have to raise it again at some point down the road. But to say you're going to implement what could be a $2 million added payroll between general government and KPU. And remember, we deferred a 3.5% electric rate increase because of the diesels, but that was directed such that when the diesel surcharges end, that 3.5% electric rate is going to go into effect again because of the comp plan. So all I'm saying is if you're serious about implementing it, do you have to raise the full eight tenths of a mill this year? Probably not. But recognize you're going to be right back in this position come next June.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Carl, can you, where did we be in the mill if we hadn't lowered it? I know that there's been a couple times where we've actually lowered the mill rate over the years. If we had just raised it, where would we be? I mean, compared to everywhere else in the state, we're still pretty low, right?
I'm not going to, I can't confirm that tonight, Councilmember Gage. In my tenure, we did lower the mill rate in the early 90s, but I don't think we've lowered it since then, to my recollection.
Your Honor?
Yes, Mark.
Question for Carl. Carl, this comp plan, this doesn't have to be an all or nothing thing, does it? Could this be phased in, in sections as the council deems appropriate?
That's an option that's available, Councilmember Flora, but I would respectfully remind the council that we did an update a few years ago. And initially, the council said that it was going to be implemented and then it went off into the void and it wasn't implemented. And that's part of the reason that precipitated the current compensation plan update that we're submitting to you tonight. So candidly speaking, I get concerned when the council says we don't have to raise taxes to fund it, we have enough, and then we're going to address it later. The past track record hasn't been great at doing that.
Luke?
Under-
Go ahead, Mark, finish up.
Go ahead, Mark, finish up.
Understood. Carl, the reason I ask is if we're going to consider deferring the tax, I don't want to do the 2014 plan again and do nothing. I just looked at the comp plan and it just occurs to me that if we have a phased comp plan with a timeline for all segments of it, then maybe Councilmember Williams' suggestion can be worked into that. That's all.
If I could just make one other comment relative to that, Councilmember Flora. Remember, we're in the second year of a three-year contract extension. We'll have one more year in 2020. So if you're going to be phasing the implementation of the comp plan before you this evening for the sake of discussion over three years, you'll also be in collective bargaining relative to what any of the three collective bargaining units might be expecting in terms of cost of living adjustments above and beyond the comp plan. So it's going to get a little complicated in that regard.
Luke?
Well, I think we need to-
Mark, I'm going to let Luke go here in a minute.
Yes, sir.
Wait, Luke.
Well, I mean, the council is very pragmatic, you know, sensible and, you know, looking ahead like that. I'm just saying, we have the money. I mean, you know, we're 19 or 20 positions. How much has that saved us so far this year not having them fill? It's got to be a couple hundred thousand dollars.
I don't disagree, but look at the problems we have by not filling the positions because we're not market competitive.
Okay, well, we can look at the, we haven't even looked at the report, at least I haven't. And I don't know if I want to change every one of those suggestions in there. There's some we might, some not. One thing I'm going to say is, you know, we negotiate our contract and, you know, and the union signs it, we sign it. If we're not, and then nobody's happy with it for what they're making. I mean, we could go with Anchorage who gives their unions plenty more a year than we do, 4% or 5%. And they can negotiate our contracts, of course. If we can't hire somebody because we're too low, understand we're going to have to adjust to the market. But just because the report says this, this, and this needs to be changed, doesn't mean we're going to do it. What I'm saying is if it's going to cost the city only $455,000 this year if we do everything on that report, heck, we got 4.8, just looking in reserve of the general fund, not counting the other couple funds we have. I mean, we got 8 million there. I think we can handle it. And next year is another year. We look at it budget time because there's other things that will probably pop in that will be good for us and bad for us money-wise. And we make a new plan. I'm not saying the plan wasn't good. I'm just saying after the start of this year, I'm looking at where the finances are, we're looking pretty good. We don't have to worry about it. At this, next year, we might have to go up 8.
At this time, I think as a compromise, I'd like to see a proposal for a 4% increase.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move in second. Dave, you have anything?
No. The one thing I had- We cannot, this particular council cannot bind a future council to do anything. We can talk about a thing, but it would not be real, it's not realistic for us to do nothing. You know, we knew getting, coming into this, we talked about this several months ago, that we had, you know, the city had not done right the last time by commissioning a study, saying they were going to get around to eventually implementing it and then basically burying it. So I am certainly, personally, I would like to see a phased process in so we don't have to raise taxes so dramatically. But as I said before, we can't, we can't promise that, but I guess if we're all here again, make sure we, we need to remember that we, what we did this year and how, how we need to continue the process next year.
Now, that motion was 4%? 4%. Or the-
4 mills.
4 mills. A lot of different percent. Yeah. Mill. Excuse me.
4, 4, 4 mill.
Your Honor, can you clarify what you just said? Because I didn't catch that about-
So the original motion, the original motion was to 4.8. And so we-
8, oh, sorry, 8 tenths of a mill.
8 tenths of a mill, and we moved it back to 4 tenths of a mill.
Yeah, no, we're raising it 4 mills.
Okay.
All right. Are we all square with the money?
It's gone to 8?
Yeah, that would be June.
So as a compromise, we cut it in half.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would that work, sir?
It would work for this year.
Okay.
It will work for this year, that's correct.
Okay.
So we talk about assessments, yet we don't really quantify that. So I think what I'm going to do is go through my historical property tax bills and look at the millage rate and then look at the assessments. Because as time goes on, the assessments, valuations seem to accelerate and where our property taxes are assessed at more money even at the same millage rates, which results in a higher property tax bill for people like me and the people that we represent. So I think it's an important component of this discussion. When we talk about millage rate and utility rates and, you know, all of those things, that every component of it that actually affects your actual bill, you know? So, you know, I'm not going to be voting for any rate increases for this year.
So in the packet, there's also, one of the pages Sam has, what the property valuation is and what the mill rates have been over the last 20 years. So that would tell you in regards to the assessed valuation also and how it increased. So you could see those on one of the pages in here. And there's also a portion of that which shows the senior and veteran exemptions, which I agree with. But that, that increases, that money comes off of the rule that arrayed about $1.6 million a year. And in the last 20 years, it's $35 million, so it all comes into play. I agree with you.
Yeah, well, we talked about, I mean, I heard this argument a lot, I'm just diving in there again, but, you know, we hear about local politicians saying that, well, we have an upped your millage rate. Well, you know, your property taxes, because of the valuation, increases. And so if the intent was is that your property tax bill stays the same, then you should have lowered the millage rate. So, you know, again, I'm talking about the actual bill because I get the actual bills and I get to actually pay them. And the people that I've been talking to have also been actually paying their utility bills and they're not happy either. And so they asked me to express that tonight and so that's what I'm doing.
I appreciate that and everybody on this council also appreciates that because we all pay taxes. We, when we assess these, we're not exempt from them. So I understand that. Thank you, Sam. So we have a motion and it's been amended in regards to the 0.4. Is there any other discussion? So we're voting on the amendment?
On the amendment. So we would strike out the 0.8, 10% mill and replace it with 0.4?
Correct. Would you please call the roll?
Flora?
No.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bergeron? Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Coos?
No.
That fails. 4 to 3. So the main motion is still on for 0.8?
I moved it meant to, I believe in a 6.6.
Second.
Luke?
Captain.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Zingy?
No.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Kifer?
No.
Gage?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
That passes 4 to 3.
Well, oh, Flora.
Flora.
2, 3, guys.
Oops.
That's what we need for leaving.
Yay or nay?
Yes.
That passes 4 to 3.
Okay.
Technically, that was on the amendment, I believe.
Now we have to put-
Now we have to vote on the resolution itself as amended.
Okay.
Okay. We voted and approved the amendment, now we have to vote the main motion has-
All right, so this is the main motion, which has been amended to the stay in status quo at 6.6.
Right.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Coos?
Yes.
Zingy?
No.
Flora?
Can I hear, sorry, can I get clarification? Were we voting on here now?
Now, will the amendment pass for 6.6? So now we're voting on the main motion with the 6.6 instead of 8.0. So it's leaving at the same? Pretty much, yes.
It wasn't supposed to.
Yes.
Yes.
Kifer?
No.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Gage?
No.
4 to 3.
That passes 4 to 3. So we are still implementing and we're still working on the compensation plan, understanding that we'd be able to fund it with available fund at this particular point, but we wrote it down to 0. Okay. That brings, that brings us to item 7A13, a call to artists, a budget transfer for a community holiday tree topping ornament. You guys are all there.
I'm sorry, we're just trying to-
You guys ready for a short break? If you want to do?
Yeah.
All right, let's take, take one. Okay, we'll come back to order. We are on item 7A13, a call to artists and budget transfer for community holiday tree topping ornament.
Your Honor, I move the City Council to approve a call to artists for a community holiday tree topping ornament and authorize the City Manager to transfer $1,000 from appropriated reserves of the general fund to the mayor and council's 2019 community propulsion account number 610.01 in order to fund the project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moving second date.
Um, I, yeah, that's what it costs apparently.
Well, it doesn't mean you spend the whole thing, right?
No, exactly.
And if you look at the pictures here, that is an awful big tree. So when they're saying a five foot something or other-
Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be big.
Yeah. Doesn't meet all the requirements. Any? Yes, start with two and then we'll go to, yeah.
Carl, on the topper, who's going to determine the, I mean, if it's safe or whatever, or physi, I mean, sound to put on top of there in a wind and everything? I mean,
We'll be doing the review of the proposals in-house. And Lacy, do you want to come up?
I just trying to picture what would be on.
Lacy Simpson, Assistant City Manager. So
That's what the artist is for.
Jan Lee, Jan Lee, we got somebody else at the microphone.
So in answer to your question, Councilmember Williams, we are requiring that the chosen artist have their piece engineered by a professional physical engineer so that we're verifying that it is safe and meets all of the requirements, that it will stay on the tree. It meets wind and loading capacity and all of the different requirements that we've put forth in the proposal.
Thank you very much.
My question is, some justification of $15,000, that's out of line in my mind.
So again, if I may, the $15,000, I will, I will say is a ballpark figure. It is a large piece, as Mayor Severson suggested. It's also a very heavy piece. It needs to be weather resistant. It needs to be illuminated. I think it requires a certain skill set, a very specialized skill set that would warrant that, that price. It's very, very likely that proposals will come in under that. But I think for the type of project that we're asking, one that can stand out in the weather for two months, be illuminated, be subject to wind, and come down and be put up year after year, and what we're hoping for is a longevity of 10 years, I think a $15,000 cost seems reasonable at this point.
My issue is that if we set $15,000, it will be $15,000, I guarantee.
That's, no, absolutely correct.
I think one of the requirements is it has to have 15-foot tether on it tied to some other part of the tree.
Yeah, no kidding.
Your goal was to cut it in half. Any other discussion?
Just, just to note, your honor, we, we often illuminate things around our house. If anyone's actually just done regular ornaments, they're real expensive now. They're not cheap. So $15,000 for this may seem high, but the reality is what you're paying for them, I think it's not. I don't think it's out of line.
Loaned it for 15 years.
So Carl, in regard to the tree, are we going to have to add additional funding for more lights, being, as it's such a large tree?
Probably. And we'll be trying to work that up soon and get a number for you.
Have at it. Have at it.
During the budget process, we actually budgeted more funds in the city councils, city, mayor and city councils' community promotion account, understanding that we would be using, or hopefully, hoping that we would be using this tree. So we budgeted more funding for lights, but it's a rough estimate. We've never lit this tree before. So we're hoping that the additional funds will cover the lighting and the additional strings of light, but it's possible that we may need to budget more funds in future years.
And so another thing I was concerned about, and I was walking down there the other day, is there are some light standards right there close. Do we have the opportunity to provide power to that tree, something more stationary that we can come off of that, I don't know if it has to have ground fault or whatever it may have.
So at the moment, what we are planning to do is use the power from the building itself, and that's part of the agreement that we have with the General Services Administration. I did discuss using some of the fixed lighting that's in the area with the electric division manager, and we could certainly do that. It's a little bit more involved, and I think their preference at this moment is to use the power from the building rather than patch in to one of the standing light posts that's in the vicinity.
Thank you.
I just had one question. Now, the chambers decide to get out of this, are we going to have a little thing at the fire department with Santa Claus and do that kind of stuff?
Absolutely. Yep, that will, that will remain. That's definitely still part of the community celebration.
Thank you very much.
You can be Santa if you want to.
I can pick it up.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Coos?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yeah.
Williams?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Gage?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That motion passes. Brings us to item B1, professional service agreement to determine the feasibility of constructing a separate raw water transmission line, civil science infrastructure, H.
Your honor?
Yes.
I move the city council to approve professional service agreement with civil service infrastructure, Inc., in the amount of $24,000 in terms of feasibility of constructing a separate raw water transmission line independent of, which serves the Ketchikan Lakes Hydro Project, authorized funding in the amount of $12,000 and $12,000 respectively from the Water Division and Electric Division's 2019 Engineering Act, Architectural Services Account, and direct the general manager to execute contract documents on behalf of the city council.
Second.
They've moved in second. Luke?
I have not worthy to talk about the issue. Carl, you want to explain it?
John, do you want to? John Kleiner, KP Water Division Manager. Well, this is really a straightforward problem that both Andy and I agree on, a possible solution. Ketchikan Lakes is a pretty uniform water supply. The quality doesn't vary that much, whereas Granite Basin is really a variable. But when you look at the stream flow reports, Granite Basin is fully one-third of all the water that's produced within the watershed. And so it's a very important component, particularly for hydro generation, particularly in dry years as we're experiencing now. But the quality of the water that is coming from Granite Basin, there are times after a dry area, well, like now, if we see a sudden rain squall coming to where it represents a couple inches, you know, from the electric standpoint, they're going to be overjoyed. From our standpoint, the water quality is going to really cause us problems. One of the problems is that after mountain goats were planted there, the fecal coliform colony count is high. And we're restricted in our, as an unfiltered system, we're restricted in what the number of fecal colonies can be in the raw water supply. It's hard to comprehend, but last October, when we were having trouble, we were getting samples as much as 118 colonies in just a very small sample that's, it was maybe three ounces. The water was contaminated. You know, obviously, we can honestly disinfect it, but the EPA rules are very strict. And if we go over 20 colonies, then we are, are below the mechanism that we have to report. If we don't have 90% of our samples above this threshold, then we're in a technical, let's say, violation. I have probably confused the issue, but basically, we're trying to look at a way that we can address both Andy's and my concerns. Enough water for hydro generation, but enough water that meets the EPA standards so that we're able to remain as an unfiltered system.
So John, how do, where would this bypass go?
Well, it would follow the route before the tunnels were built and completed back in 1926. There used to be a series of wooden pen stocks that came down Ketchikan Creek. If you walk along the north side of the creek, you can still see a little bit of the remains of the old wood stave pen stock that came down.
So that then would go into Ketchikan Plant and then be diverted back into Ketchikan Creek?
Well, it would come down Ketchikan Creek, make the tie-in into the additional connection that we made as part of the raw water system, I'll say rebuild. And so we'd just be drawing water from Ketchikan Lakes. Andy would be able to draw water from both Ketchikan Lakes plus whatever else is coming out of Granite Basin. And from both our standpoints, it would be a win-win situation.
Good.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I think this makes sense, but it's really hard to visualize. And what we're lacking here is I'm going to send aerial photo with some lines showing where these different places are and where you're going to put this stuff.
We can certainly provide that.
But it's something that should have been with this, and I would ask that maybe the next meeting, this shows up so that we understand where this one lays here, this one lays here, and this one's draining in here. Because right now, it's only in words, and it's hard to say, yeah.
We can certainly provide that.
Yes.
Luke?
I think the problem could be solved if we have a goat hunt.
I recommend it highly.
I think we should ask them.
We'll, uh, provide the bullets.
Good.
Yes.
So, John, what is this overall project going to eventually cost?
Well, this is just a preliminary study to say, is it possible? And it's, you know, there's no sense pulling a punch. It's, it's probably going to be significant money. It's going to be difficult, building adjacent to a anadromous stream. We're going to be punching a water line through basically virgin forest at least, you know, for the last 100 years. The gentleman that's going to do the study, our compatriots, and Prince Rupert, are doing something similar right now. And he'll be able to look at the work that they're doing and maybe give us a better handle as to what the costs are.
Significant. Get any idea what significant is?
Well, I don't want to presuppose it, but certainly when you're doing things by hand, you look at the cost of putting in the HDPE line from Whitman to the hatchery, that was a significant amount of money. I don't have it at my fingertips, but we can certainly get it.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see what kind of money we're talking about. I certainly support the study.
I would suspect it's going to be, while significant, I suspect it's going to be far less than what we're going to have to spend if we have to put in water filtration. And this is one of the reasons we're trying to do this.
Hundreds of millions, okay. No, it's a good project, John. Thanks for bringing it today.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, John. Don't go very far. We've got another one coming up. So, fund the study. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That passes. Brings us down to award of contract number 1927, programmable logic controller assessment phase one, design assessment, CH2M Hill Engineering, and motion.
Your honor?
Yes.
I move the city council to approve contract 1927, programmable logic controller assessment phase one, design assessment between the city and CH2M Hill engineers in the amount of $50,000, right, funding from the Water Division's electric, I mean, the Water Division's
Any one second. Luke?
I have nothing.
So Carl, if I could through John, I guess, you know, first of all, you think come up, and I think it's probably a good process to assess them. But when we get into a situation where we can potentially be upgrading or changing the SCADA system out to a tune of about $1.25 million. And as I look through this, it's, it's at, like, there's a metric here of what things last how long, and I, I appreciate that. And when we talk about the SCADA PLC controllers, and, and I think you're looking at those, what are they, O5s dash somethings? Those can be purchased, I imagine, for $3,000, $4,000, something like that. I don't know what they are. And they're replaceable. And the ones that we have right now have lasted us 15 years. And I don't know why we wouldn't go out since they're still being sold. Buy a half a dozen, it'll be good for the next 30 years. In regards to the, the system we have in place today. But what it looks like is they're asking to upgrade this thing to where we put in a system that calls them on their cell phones and, and gives them codes and telephones. And I just going to have to know a lot more about this. You know, we have budgetary restraints within the water department in regards to stuff, where I don't mind upgrading. If we were to buy the replacement parts, could this thing stand in place until it do what it's supposed to do? Or are we going to be asking it to do more in regards to controlling the stuff? Not necessarily notifying somebody, but controlling the stuff we have.
Well, the real concern on this, just like any computer-driven equipment, you know, the phrase that keeps coming up is planned, I'll say, obsolescence. And, you know, the, this particular version of the Allen Bradley product, yes, we have adequate spares. But once they quit making spares and once they quit building the input-output NC modules, and we ultimately use our spares up, then we're going to be in a situation where, you know, we're trying to buy used gear somewhere, but it's no longer manufactured by Allen Bradley. This $50,000 basically is to take a close look at what we're doing and how we're doing it, and, and start planning, basically for the future. You know, the equipment that we have installed right now isn't suddenly going to fail. We have adequate spares. But there will come a time in the future that those spares won't be available.
My fear is, as, as we have it today, 10 years down the line, we may have a whole separate system that this thing will be supporting anyway. We may be required to go to filtration, or we may plan to go to some other thing, or there might be something else. I don't know what it is. And so if, and, and the study will probably give us some of that stuff. I'm just concerned that we just, if we have a system that's working that can still be supported, and we have an opportunity, because PLCs can be replaced, if we buy some and get them on the shelf and can do that kind of stuff. If we can maintain the system until we get a good handle on where we're going to be in the next 10 years in regards to our water quality, I would hate to put that kind of money out and then have things change.
Well, the equipment that we're running now was basically the very best we could purchase. And in all that time since we've been running it, we've only had one failure of an input-output NC module, which speaks well for the quality. I think really what, what we're looking at is trying to position ourselves basically for the future so that we're not surprised when somebody looks in a box and says, well, gosh, we've only got one of these left. What are we going to do? And unfortunately, these, these three units in three different locations, they're interconnected. They have to talk to each other to achieve the disinfection that we're doing.
And I see one of the other justifications is the fact, right now, the alarms in regards to the SCADA systems go to Bailey Power Plant, and Bailey operators can, can get the alarm and then they'll call out from somebody from the water department and go see what it is.
Yes.
And the proposal is maybe even get a smarter thing where we'll put the cell phone repeaters in metal buildings and it'll call the guys directly and give them codes, and they can do things from home.
Well, that sounds nice, but we can certainly pay some overtime for quite a while before we get to that point.
Yeah. So I, again, I just, you know, technology is what it is, and it changes so fast. What we have, and I know some of this stuff is fairly new, you know, when we think about, when we change the stuff over at the chlorine plant, when we did the stuff in regards to what the secondary chlorination and stuff, some of that stuff is fairly new and, and working fairly, fairly well. And like you say, it's good equipment. Allen Bradley's always been good equipment. So I just hope this study gives us some of the idea of how sound our system is today. I, I agree that it needs to be assessed, because some of the stuff's 15 years old. I agree that it needs to be assessed, because some of the stuff's 15 years old. Mr. Mayor? Yes.
Yeah, I guess my concern may be along about yours. If we've got backup equipment for this now, and it's working, and the stuff's lasted 15 years, we do a study for a year, and we don't need anything out of it for 10 years, the technology's all changed. So what, are we wasting our time now doing a study to say, hey, we're going to use this equipment tomorrow? Because in five, six years, it's all changed. So are we premature on doing the study?
No, because once the factory support disappears, then we're on our own. All we have is, you know, our existing equipment. We can plug the new piece in. But that's about as far as we're going to be able to go. It's an older generation, just like what we did with an upgrade to the SCADA system. This is a 32-bit system. It's susceptible to hacking. I think we've all read about the horrible situation that Baltimore's in. Now, there, somebody was able to break through their firewall. The people that have done it are asking for, what, $100,000 in Bitcoins? And sooner or later, Baltimore's probably going to have to pay for it. We don't want to get to that point.
Thank you. Those are just the questions I have on in regards to it, so. Do we have a motion on the floor? Is there any other questions? Are you none? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Okay.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. Item 3 was on consent. Brings us down to vouchers. Ketchikan Daily News, $3,080.47.
I can't vote.
You can't vote?
Yeah.
I have a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move for approval of the vouchers to Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of $3,080.40.
Second.
And move and second. Discussion. Are you none? Please call the roll.
Flora?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. Item 3 was on consent. Brings us down to vouchers. Ketchikan Daily News, $3,080.40.
I can't vote.
You can't vote?
Yeah.
I have a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move for approval of the vouchers to Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of $3,080.40.
Second.
And move and second. Discussion. Are you none? Please call the roll.
Flora?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. Item 3 was on consent. Brings us down to vouchers. Ketchikan Daily News, $3,080.40.
I can't vote.
You can't vote?
Yeah.
I have a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move for approval of the vouchers to Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of $3,080.40.
Second. And move and second. Discussion. Are you none? Please call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Kifer?
No.
And Bergeron, Mr. Chief.
Thank you. So?
Have a good one, sir.
It's been a long day.
It's been a long day. So, we will read us into, all right, we'll come back to order after executive session. We talked with management and gave them direction. That brings us to Dave's favorite motion.
Move to adjourn.
[laughing].
[inaudible].
Mr. Mayor? Yes.
Yeah, I guess my concern may be along about yours. If we've got backup equipment for this now, and it's working, and the stuff's lasted 15 years, we do a study for a year, and we don't need anything out of it for 10 years, the technology's all changed. So what, are we wasting our time now doing a study to say, hey, we're going to use this equipment tomorrow? Because in five, six years, it's all changed. So are we premature on doing the study?
No, because once the factory support disappears, then we're on our own. All we have is, you know, our existing equipment. We can plug the new piece in. But that's about as far as we're going to be able to go. It's an older generation, just like what we did with an upgrade to the SCADA system. This is a 32-bit system. It's susceptible to hacking. I think we've all read about the horrible situation that Baltimore's in. Now, there, somebody was able to break through their firewall. The people that have done it are asking for, what, $100,000 in Bitcoins? And sooner or later, Baltimore's probably going to have to pay for it. We don't want to get to that point.
Thank you. Those are just the questions I have on in regards to it, so. Do we have a motion on the floor? Is there any other questions? Are you none? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. Item 3 was on consent. Brings us down to vouchers. Ketchikan Daily News, $3,080.40.
I can't vote.
You can't vote?
Yeah.
I have a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
May the City Council clarify consistent with the City Attorney's request dated May 28, 2019, in the best interest of the City. The Council will go into executive session to discuss personal injury claims to Sam Bergeron and Linda Millard against the city in accordance with Ketchikan Municipal Code 2, 02, 04, 025A1 and 3, which include the need to discuss subjects, the knowledge of which could have an immediate perverse impact on the finances of the city, and receive legal advice within attorney-client privilege.
Your second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Kifer?
No.
And Bergeron, Mr. Chief.
Thank you. So?
Have a good one, sir.
It's been a long day.
It's been a long day. So, we will read us into, all right, we'll come back to order after executive session. We talked with management and gave them directions. That brings us to Dave's favorite motion.
Move to adjourn.
[laughing].